So for that, we're thankful. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Chairperson Wannika.
Yep.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Member Elmer?
Here.
Member Staresney King?
Here.
Member Maynes?
Here.
Chairperson Lantus is absent, and Member Kane, present.
All right. At this time, I would ask the Planning Commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest, or any expertise, or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda, so they might come to a fair decision. Well, thank you. That side, any discussion on minutes? Any changes to minutes from August 10th feels like forever? Any changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes from the August 10th meeting.
Second?
I second.
Want to roll call, or do I just say all's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I must thank you. Any commissioner comments? Anything I don't understand about the public hearings? I think we're, our next one will be two weeks from now?
October 12.
October 12th, yeah, so.
And it's not a, there's no public hearing, it's going to be business.
It's just going to be business? Okay.
Most likely the final plat.
Fuck four. Okay. All right, okay, yeah. Any old business that anybody can think of? Let's say new business, Evanwood subdivision, final plat. Over to you, sir.
So Jennifer Reinhardt is on, right?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So the item before you all today for discussion is the final plat for the Evanwood subdivision, and I did prepare a brief presentation, so I will share my screen, and we'll go through that remotely. Okay, so you all have reviewed the preliminary plat previously. This slide is just to refresh your memories, since it has been a while, as Vice Chair mentioned earlier, but just the location of this proposed subdivision at 1001 East Wilson, and just a reminder that it does meet the current zoning and future land use designations. And then, action taken to date, at the June Planning Commission meeting, the preliminary plat was approved with the following condition, and those conditions were met when the developer resubmitted the preliminary plat, and they also submitted draft infrastructure plans that are undergoing review by the Design Review Committee, and we are waiting a resubmit to address those comments. And then, of course, the final plat, proposed final plat, has been submitted in your package for discussion this afternoon. So, in brief, there are comments, have yet to be resolved on the final plat, just looking at the infrastructure plan, but they are a minor, and so, for example, you need some of the utilities are moved on the infrastructure plans, the utility line on the final plat might need to be adjusted. We're also asked the developer their plans for tract A, that stormwater detention basin, there's a plan in place for, or if they could clarify, the ownership and maintenance of that site, so the city is aware of that in the future. I also included in your package just the infrastructure plans to show where the sidewalks in particular are to be located, that was an item of discussion with the preliminary plat at the discussion, or at the previous meetings. And again, there's some, just minor things to be resolved, like extending the sidewalk along East Grant to the east property line, and just providing additional curb inlet protection, but overall, the Designer View committee just has minor comments to be resolved, and staff is confident that, you know, we'll move forward with the review process to address these changes. And so, the recommendation is that we are looking, or asking for this item to be placed on the agenda for the October regular meeting, and, you know, provided that the revised plans be submitted for review in advance. And I know that the engineer and the developer are joining us this afternoon remotely, and so they can speak to timeline. We did speak to the engineer briefly before this meeting, but in general, I think we're comfortable placing this on October for action, should these items be met, but just wanted to introduce this final plat as part of this study session, and make sure that the, you know, you all and, you know, as commissioners, are also comfortable moving ahead and placing this on the agenda for the meeting two weeks from now, for voting action. So with that, I'll stop presentation, happy to answer questions, and again, the development team is present, if you have any additional questions, to be directed to them as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments from the commissioners? Needed clarification?
It looks like they've addressed all of our concerns we had previously.
Yep. Everybody comfortable with us giving them the go-ahead to put it on the mid, on the agenda for October?
I think so.
Think so?
I agree with Member Crowley that they seem to have addressed everything that we had discussed in the last time we looked at this, so.
Okay, yeah.
I agree.
Good, good. And Kane?
No, I agree, I think if they've answered all the questions and addressed them all, then I think it's prudent that we move forward in a timely manner to get this project going.
Sir?
I agree.
Yeah. All right, so do I take a formal motion from everyone to move this forward?
I make a motion that we place the Evanwoods' final plat on the October 12th agenda for final approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion on this? Nope? You want to take roll, or I'll just say, go ahead, yeah, all right.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Staresney King?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Wannika?
Yes.
Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Well, thank you. So the next thing on our agenda is, I think it has a little bit of a history, I think we just kind of felt like, one, it's just time for us to not only acquaint ourselves with the comprehensive plan, but just so we get to know what's in it, and maybe, out of our review, and our study, and our getting to know it, you know, I think there may be need for a comprehensive plan review, or reaffirmation, or changes, or updates sometime in the future that we can recommend to, to the City Commission, and that's why it ended up on the agenda, but go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Wannika suggested that we bring this up, and I'm glad he did, because it focused my attention on it, looking at it. It's, the comprehensive plan currently was, there was a major rewrite, or a major writing of it in 2001 through 2003, it's adopted in 2004, and then there was an update in 2010. So it's kind of a good time to review it, there are some things that have happened over the last few years, we all know what those are, I think. You know, the current situation, housing affordability is an issue pretty much everywhere. It used to be, that was just in urban areas, on the coast, larger cities, but now it's affecting us directly. So, what I thought I'd do is kind of give you my presentation, and some of this is, are things you already know, but possibly not. There's, there's a lot of misunderstanding what a comprehensive plan is. So, comprehensive plan, it's a vision of the community, so this is, this is generally comprehensive plans around the country, this is what they're like, they do vary from state to state, there are different state laws also, about what needs to be in the comprehensive plan, but, so, I went to graduate school in California, and California's state law is very, it requires comprehensive plans, requires certain elements, they have to have a housing element, and that's not true in other states, but it's different state to state, but generally, the idea's the same, because it goes way back. Comprehensive plans really started being written a lot, and widely, in the, I'd say in the 50s, because of federal money getting involved, and it was in cities and counties' interests to have a comprehensive plan. Okay, so, what is a comprehensive plan? It's a vision of the community, as determined by stakeholders, so ideally, a comprehensive plan is not something written in a room by five people, or two people, or just a planning commission, it really involves the community, and a broad section of the community, a broad cross-section of the community. It's a guide to decision-making. It's comprehensive regarding information, issues, and policy. It's really, gets into the details, covers, covers a lot of things in breadth, but also in depth at some point. It's, it's long-range, typically 20 to 25 years, it's not a strategic plan. Now, a strategic plan, that differs by the context, but if a local government organization, or some kind of organization wants to create a strategic plan, it's usually a five-year plan, or a three-year plan. You, quite often, it doesn't require another set of regulations, or guidelines, or anything to implement it, it's more direct. A lot of times, it involves, you know, expenditure of resources, that type of thing. The comprehensive plan is broader than that, and it's more long-range. The comprehensive plan is a set of policies, it's not regulations, and that's an important distinction, because with policy, there's a little bit more interpretation involved sometimes, there's a little more flexibility how it's applied, regulations, not so much. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions or comments. Comprehensive plan typically is implemented by regulations, capital projects, the budget, which includes capital projects a lot of times, programming of services, which is directly related to budget, but, but services certainly, and just decisions overall. That slide is, something's not right about that slide, okay. So, the Kansas statutes on the comprehensive plan specifically are, there's not that much, I don't have any fingernails, about a page and a half be printed out, so those are the statutes on the comprehensive plan. There are statutes on other aspects of planning, subdivision, zoning regulation, et cetera, but that's, that's specific to the comprehensive plan. So this is just an excerpt from this. "City Planning Commission is hereby authorized to make or cause to be made a comprehensive plan for the development of such city and any unincorporated territory lying outside of the city, but within the same county in which the city is located, which is the, which in the opinion of the Planning Commission, forms the total community of which the city is a part." So a couple of things out of this, is it's not mandatory. Another thing is, is it's usually, it usually involves land outside the city, because the city's going to grow into that land, or is affected by that land outside the city. And, and it's really the role of the Planning Commission to recommend the comprehensive plan to the governing body. There's another excerpt, "In the preparation of such plan, the Planning Commission shall make or cause to be made comprehensive surveys and studies of past and present conditions and trends related to land use, population, building intensity, public facilities, transportation, transportation facilities, economic conditions, natural resources, and may include any other element deemed necessary to the comprehensive plan." So that tells you what elements are in a comprehensive plan, for the most part. Other thing, other thing of, things of note that are in the statutes, it requires a public hearing by the Planning Commission to adopt a comprehensive plan, no comprehensive plan is effective unless approved by the governing body. "Such plan or part thereof shall constitute the basis or guide for public action to ensure coordinated and harmonious development or redevelopment, which will best promote the health, safety, morals, work convenience, prosperity, and general welfare, as well as wise and efficient expenditure of public funds." There is something in the comprehensive plan, or excuse me, in the statutes, that says that, and it uses the word "shall," that a city shall review a comprehensive plan annually.
Question?
Excuse me?
Before you go on, question.
Sure.
So, when it says a city, it does not say, it does it, does the statute point to which organ of the city, or it just says the city?
I'll read it to you. "At least once each year, the Planning Commission shall review or reconsider the plan."
Okay.
"Or any part thereof, and may propose amendments, extensions, or additions to the same procedure for the adoption of any such amendment, extension, or addition to any plan or part thereof shall be the same as that required for the adoption of the original plan or part thereof." So, what I've seen happen in another Kansas city that I worked in, they just, they did this every year, they didn't, they didn't necessarily propose amendments to it every year, but they would just have a statement, hey, we've reviewed it, and there's no need for an update right now, or, but there's some action, or decision, or, you know, it's on the agenda once a year. The city I recently worked in, I don't necessarily need to name the city, they didn't do that, and they were pretty, they followed, you know, they were careful to follow the laws and everything, but they didn't do that, so I'm, I'm not sure it's that common for cities to always do that, even though it does say "shall" in the statute. Almost hated to point that out.
So, question, if, if the city shall, sorry, I'm trying to get better line of sight. If the city shall, what if the city shall nots? What happens with that? Is there, since it's in Kansas law, for it, that they shall, what is the outcome?
Repercussion, right?
Yeah, yeah, what's the outcome if they choose not to? Or, that it's been an oversight?
Well, to me, "shall" means, "shall" doesn't mean you have to, does it? Nope.
"Shall" means you have to. However, you're not, you don't have to have the plan at all, right? You're authorized.
True.
So, if you're, you don't have to have the plan.
So, it'd be great to have a city attorney here today. I almost hated to bring this up, but this is a study session, so we're just talking, right? So there's "should," "shall," "must." "Should" and "shall" don't mean the same thing, "shall" and "must," I'm not sure.
Yeah, right.
I don't think, I'm pretty sure that no one, there aren't any direct repercussions, like there's no police watching, there's no police force, or police entity watching us to make sure we do it.
Sure, but the question would be like penalties, would there, what kind of penalty, if there would or would not?
I'll tell you what I think, I don't know for certain, but I think that it just, it affects the credibility of the plan.
Right.
If you're citing the plan, or the reason you're making a decision, someone could-
Or applying for a grant.
Yeah.
That requires, you know, a plan, and then they ask, oh, they just, you know, those type of things.
And your comprehensive plan is 20 years old?
Yeah, it's 20 years old, you haven't reviewed it, you haven't followed the law. You know, in the decisions that you're asked to make regularly, on zoning changes, or initial use permits, one of the factors is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? And that's, that, in some cases, that's a pretty important factor, not in every case. So, I think that, in my opinion, it should be at least reviewed, it doesn't mean a ton of effort needs to be put into it, but it's really due for a review, in my opinion. Yeah.
Well, it is, and, and Dr. Wannika made an excellent point, is that if it's required for application of grants, whether it's being the city, or even an individual who's, who's bringing in a project into the city, if we're not up to date, then it would prevent or prohibit possible future development.
Undermine the credibility, like you say, right, yeah.
Yeah. I think if you're citing the comprehensive plan as a justification or basis for something.
Right.
It just, it affects the credibility of it.
Am I mixing up documents? I feel like there has been discussion in the last couple of years, asking for public input on maybe portions of the comprehensive plan, or is that, was that a different document?
There could be. I know that the city adopted a, they updated the parks master plan.
Master plan.
I feel like there was something else, because I know sidewalks came up, and some other things, so I couldn't remember.
There's a capital improvement program.
I think that must be it, then.
And so, here's the other thing, what I expect to happen next month, I like to use the word "expect," because I'm not committing to it, because I don't have the role over it. But, the city has a capital improvement program, and that's under review right now, and the Planning Commission's role is to determine whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan or not.
And we did get, didn't we get the budget? We got the numbers to the capital improvement plan, didn't we?
You did at the end of last year, I know that.
At the end of last year, yeah.
Yeah, something, there was-
I haven't seen it, because I haven't.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah, we did get, we did get the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I expect that that'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
At the end of October, study session at the end of October. I am looking at "shall" as a definition, it says "shall" is an option to do something, "must" does not have the option. Really?
Yeah.
Where are you getting that definition? There's lots of them on there.
Just, just, just the definition, right?
We go to, like, the legal, the legal aspect of it, the legal definition of it, so, I would think that we would need to have the legal definition, so.
Just in general, if something in the code says "shall," I consider it a requirement, but, but now you are armed with this information, so. Google. Google's always right.
And, and I would just say, just, just, you know, send an email to the city attorney.
Yeah.
And just, and just ask.
Okay.
That's a good point, though. That's a good point.
All right. Okay, so, I'm going to go to the next slide. Yeah, we just mentioned that. Turns your Ten Commandments upside down. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because those are commandments, not ten suggestions. And not the ten options. But the definition here, we just read a definition right.
Are they guidelines?
I guess it depends on the version that you're reading, that whether there's-
Yeah.
Yeah, if you've ever seen the movie Pirates of the Caribbean, there's a line in there where they say, "Pirates Code," yeah, but are they guidelines, or are they-
It's policy, not revolution.
Pirates policy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, contents of the comprehensive plan, these seven contents, there's, there's a lot in there, and on our website, it actually doesn't have anything that's in the comprehensive plan.
Land use, I assume that, that also means, as the city expands or grows, is the county involved in that conversation, too?
Yeah, they definitely should be, I'm, I'm sure they were in this, in ours, I can't imagine them not being.
Because they're a stakeholder.
Right.
They're definitely a stakeholder, yeah.
And they would have to be involved, especially when it comes to annexations and-
Sure.
Things of that nature.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Has there ever been one in this area?
An annexation?
Sure.
Several.
Okay.
Several in the last, probably, it's been at least two or three last 15 years.
Okay.
Yeah, so, there are a lot of goals, objectives, and policies in this document, and I'd say the first three that are showing up there are probably going to be the most important to you, so, there are 18 different sets. So what we did is, we printed off, let me see, it'll be sitting right in front of you, printed off a lot of those to these, and maybe you can just take a minute or two, just go through them, not necessarily word for word, but, so one thing about this, this talks about the process, this is part of this section. See, there's an Ottawa Vision project in early 2001, in the process. The city applied for a planning grant through the Community Capacity Building Program, and they rewarded a grant of $15,000 to update their comprehensive plan, and the city matched it with $20,000. So that talks a bit about the outreach process, stakeholder engagement process, and you go on the third page, and talks, talks a bit more. So under goals, objectives, and policies, and I'm on the third, on page 3-3, it defines what a goal, objective, and a policy is. Goals are broad statements of purpose, here's where we want to go, objectives are specific statements for achieving the goals, here's how we get there, policies are statements about what the city intends to do when implementing goals and objectives, here's what we have to do to get there. Okay? So the comprehensive plan also has an implementation section that explains how the goals, objectives, and policies are carried out, I didn't print that for you here, so, I'm on page 3-5. Establish the land use plan, so that's really the future land use map that they're talking about, for the most part. So, you know, I really don't know if we've, if we've done a lot of these things that are in here, like one of the policies is to review annual growth area plans to ensure appropriate locations for all uses, that's kind of that annual review. I think most years, what that's going to be like is, you're going to, staff's going to do a review, present it to the Planning Commission, and say, we don't think there's any need for an update, we think it's current, and you'll look at it, and you'll either agree, or you will maybe dispute that, but it's not like every year you're going to have this major update. So one thing that's on objective two, adopt and apply appropriate access management standards. I think it's a little odd that that's under the land use plan section, because that's really more of a transportation thing. I think it would be hard for us to say that there's no changes that are needed to it, because not everything comes before us, there's a lot of things that goes to your economic development, it's pretty private, it's hush-hush, right? That, so we wouldn't know whether or not something needs to be. So I think what staff would need to do is probably gather that information from these different groups of people.
Your Economic Development Council is pretty tight-lipped about some of those things, because they don't want that, right?
For good reason.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I get that.
Yeah. For good reason.
Yeah.
But you can't be tight-lipped with your city planning commissioners.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, right? I mean, it's like being tight-lipped with your banker about how you intend to fund a project.
Right, and well, the question is with that, if information shared with planning commission, like for instance, right now, this is live on Facebook at the moment. So if you're sharing information that is proprietary, sensitive information, I know that the city attorney will pull the commission, commissioners to the side, and you can actually have real estate discussions without it being in a public hearing setting. Would that be the same scenario that we would do, so that we would have the information necessary to make decisions? Just a thought, just trying to put it out there, because if, if we, if we need to know that information, and obviously we're trusted individuals from the community to be able to make decisions, we should be trusted with information to make future decisions and planning efforts for the community.
Yeah.
And to be able to do that, I would think, which is a question, if you don't know, maybe finding out how we would go about doing that, would it be a closed session that wouldn't be out for Facebook Live to hear? I don't know if anyone's even online right now, but I do know that whenever we sat down, I get alerts whenever commission comes on. So if I'm sitting in a meeting at home, or not in a meeting, but if I'm at, if I'm working from home, I get an alert. I just, in the background, I'm listening to it.
There are some legal ramifications to what can and cannot be an executive session, so that would probably be a city attorney question.
Yeah.
Taking a, just a little step back, we're talking about the objectives already, but, I'm, I mean, the objectives might meet the goal, but who decides whether the goal is still the right goal?
Well, that's.
I mean, is that gonna be a recommendation from the staff? Does that have to come from a, a different body before the staff can start working on some objectives? Like, who decides what the goal is? Because, yeah, that makes a difference.
Well, I think that comes out of the visioning. A lot of that comes out of the vision. That's pretty broad.
So, I mean, are we looking at having to step all the way back and rethink the goals before we move forward? Or are we just looking at a review to react to what's currently here?
I, I, what I would expect is if there's a review, staff would review something and determine whether we think it's still relevant. And there might be, I mean, there's probably this discussion about the review itself and what needs to happen after that review. And then if there's, if we think it's necessary, we'd go back and, and do a visioning process, update the plan.
So staff could look at this and say, you know, I'm not sure these goals are still appropriate. We need to go back and take a bigger look, or you might, we might say these goals seem to still be on par, and so now we look at the objectives? Is that what you're kind of saying?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's what I would say.
And would staff bring it to the, the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so anything that, so I, I would expect the review would be us just going through it and making a bunch of notes about what's not current, or things that have happened and aren't reflected in the plan. Didn't, the issues that are confronting us now that maybe didn't five years ago or ten years ago. And, and then just, could be the goals aren't right, or, you know, maybe it's just been so long that we don't even really need to think much about it. We just think it needs to be, stakeholders need to be consulted again.
Gotcha, okay.
And maybe that's where our, our question gets clarified and expanded on, because we don't know, need to know everything. It, it gets submitted and presented to us what their future growth plans are. And, and, and then it's brought to us as the planning commission for us to adopt it. You know, we, we, we have to go off of the staff, the recommendation. It's already been in front of the staff here, the city administration, and then it comes to us, I guess.
The other, so basically, what you're hearing is, yeah, we, we kind of need to have occasional review of the planning, of the comprehensive plan because of all these different issues. Another point I'll just quickly raise is that the planning area on this and the planning area on this is slightly different.
On the.
You're mapping over.
On the ma, on the major thoroughfare plan, the planning area.
Okay.
Just a little different.
Okay.
To the planning area on this, if you look how far this one goes, the thing that made it.
South.
Yeah, you know, yeah, like, when you look at south, because, you know, and, and remember Crowley, you remember this? We had, we did at one time discuss a project that was based here on Rock, on this side of Rock Creek. Remember that, the old cement plan and, and we had a public hearing and people came here? And that's what immediately, you know, set me off, oh, wait a minute, you know? I've, I've, I've been in meetings where we've discussed, you know? And then you look at the, according to the key, on this map of what the planning area is, even, even, even north, you know, it's a little different.
Yeah.
A little different. It just means, you know, there's no, again, speaks to the whole, you know, let's review this and let's make sure that we have an opportunity to even update what the planning area map is and, and.
This is kind of nebulous a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I think the comprehensive plan is laid out where this is more of an idea.
Yeah. But, but the key, the key that tells you what the planning area is, I mean, you can't exactly see it, is the kind of the pink, right? And, and the idea, as you call it, on this, which is being called the planning area, and this covers a little bit more than this. I'm just saying, just as an example of what a review would catch, you know, just consistency issues and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like as if, reading through this for the first time, I probably glanced at it a year ago, but looking through this, it looks like as if the reason that we even had an updated comprehensive plan was because it hadn't been updated since nineteen eighty-eight. And it says here that the city planning staff and planning commission acknowledged it, and that's where they brought in a consulting firm. Is this something that we would have to consider this time, or do you think that it would be something that we would be as a planning commission along with city planning, get this? Because it says that, like, for instance, the objectives and goals came from workshops and shreds that were held with the public. Because it's giving the vision of the future and getting the insight and input of the community, not necessarily just coming from city planning, not just necessarily coming from the planning commission. It was a whole comprehensive hearings. And again, it, it said that they had a consulting firm come in.
So the question I think is, would, would an update include all those things? Where you bring in a consultant maybe and do the visioning and do all those exercises? And I, I'd say potentially, yes. I think the first step is that review and what comes out of that review. And then it's time and money as to when that can happen. You know, you hire a consultant to do a comprehensive plan, that can, that's a pretty big price tag.
Yeah.
Especially if they do the whole thing. But, so I think potentially, that would, that could, that might happen. And that's something that, you know, I, just looking at the date of the last plan. Day one, when I was here, I saw the date and I thought, yeah, it's probably due, just because of the date alone. But when you think of what's happened in the past several years, you had the big recession in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. Then period of not much going on, quite a while. And then, uh, economy bounces back and just kind of upward trajectory. Then you had the pandemic and none of houses being built. So you got a housing shortage. The other thing that's happening, kind of a trend, is a lot of people exiting the workforce, people retiring. And that's affecting, that's part, that's one of the factors in the labor shortage. I think, understand that. So, yeah, a lot of things have happened. It's different. And, and right now, you know, you have, I think we have two consecutive quarters of negative GDP growth, but we have a labor shortage and things are hot, even despite the negative GP growth. So, yeah, they're just kind of a weird time. A lot of weird things have happened in the last few years.
Well, I can tell you, big changes happened since then. As a landlord and a contractor and a developer, we definitely need more, more multifamily space in town. There's not much.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, someone asked me this morning about how many single-family homes and duplexes have been built in the past five years, and not, there have not been very many duplexes at all. It's mostly, it's all single-family and, and, you know, not very many apartments. It's been.
Yeah. And a way of keeping score, right? Saying, we gotta know, are we moving the needle on some of these things, right? So we know we need more housing. How are we doing? You know?
So the last five years, how many single-family homes have been built?
Yeah, and, and what was an appropriate rate for our comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah.
Given the number of single-family homes built, how does this measure up with what it is, you know, the number that we're supposed to build in order for us to, you know?
Yeah, so a big part of the comprehensive plan is population.
Yeah.
And population, you divide that by two point five, tells you how many households.
Households, yeah.
Because two point five, average two point five people per house, I'm just making up that number, but it's something like that.
And I'm more talking about true multifamily, where most of the town now, there, it takes, takes too much ground to build a multifamily unit.
Yeah.
That's more what I'm saying, because you can build duplexes about anywhere.
Yeah. So answer your question.
Does that meet the need of the community if the duplex or a single-family home, if we have multiple people looking at rental houses?
We've sustained for a long time, so that's, that's a encouraging number, actually. For Ottawa, a hundred and fifty units, single family?
In twenty twenty, there were thirty-nine single-family homes built. In twenty twenty-one, there were thirty-four. And when I say built, permits issued, I don't know how many have been built, but it's gonna be the same or similar. And we're, we're at thirty, probably thirty-five right now for the year, so we're gonna, but not very many duplexes have been built, even though.
Remember Crowley's point, you know, uh, yeah, land use, you know? Let's say it's taking too much land to build a single fam, a single-family home.
To, to build multifamily.
Multifamily, sorry, multifamily home.
Well.
But, but for me, all these things I'm hearing is an indication that a review might be necessary.
Yeah.
So what's the process that you propose to move forward on this? Like, what do we need to do?
Well, my whole, my whole purpose today was just to give you an update of the plan, just where, you know, what it is, how is it used? I don't know how much everybody knows about the comprehensive plan, so if there are any questions.
When I became a commissioner, they handed me that thick booklet of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I thought I was supposed to read it all.
Yeah.
So I did. How much can I remember?
Oh, my God.
I can't. And I had a few questions.
It's a resource.
And it was a good resource. What helped me was then it coincided with the capital improvement plan, and then we had that budget. This was back in fall of twenty eighteen, where we were gonna spend three point five four million dollars redoing the pool to wind up with something that looks just like that, you know, but newer. And that was my first time to ask questions. So wait a minute, you know? And I, I do think, folks, I, I just think one is two things that need to be done. One, just updating it. You know, some of the language in there doesn't mean the same thing it did in two thousand, right now. We could literally start a war in this town about the word, the use of the word morals and what does that mean? You know, in, in light of a city, city planning, et cetera. So I'm just saying, you know, words need context and a little bit more definitions, so that's one. Two, it's a little bit of inconsistency, is what I'm thinking is, this was probably in two thousand and three, and I think this was later than two thousand and three because, you know, this plan is, is already, is now in existence right here. So, you know, I'm just saying, some of those updates, and yet the original intention was for a bigger planning area, but years later, you know, it has shrunk. But I'm a city planning commissioner, I'm being asked to review something that's outs, you know, that's outs. So just, just some of those consistencies, just to catch, there's some things that are obvious that we can do, staff can do, you know, the, the, the city leaders can do that we can catch without necessarily talking to, to a, to a consultant. Just some updates. And then there are some things that I think if we took time just to go back and read, you know, beyond just this planning session in our own time, we could come back with additional questions and things that are, that will be glaring to you like, oh, yeah, okay, I'm seeing this. Those are some of the things that I think at least we can start with. The overall strategy and patterns and all that kind of stuff, if we think, you know, a consultant is needed, I'll leave that to you, the staff, and the, and the city commissioners.
Yeah, because that would, that would cost.
Because you all have to pay the bills.
Yeah.
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 I don't know, what does everybody think about that, you know? Because there are some things, if we took time later on and go to that thick book and look at this, some things will jump at you, some things that you might see and say, this doesn't apply anymore. And do we have, and if, and if we have fulfilled a goal, for example, and it's done, right? How do we know?
Yeah.
Who's being told? What's the, what's the means of communicating to everyone? If we're lagging behind an aspect considerably, you know? He's a contractor, he might wanna know, oh, okay, we seem to be lagging behind on this. I mean, it's just availability of that type of evaluative information that, you know, I think it'll help even attracting new people to the city, new investment and things like that, that, you know? We're lagging behind on this aspect of our comprehensive plan. And, you know, Paul Bean and his crew might just, you know, might say, okay, you know, we know a few companies that are interested or citizens and stuff. That's, that's, that's kind of my point to all this. But initially, when I asked you, it was just because I saw the date.
Yeah.
I, I'm thinking too, as we look at this, how will major projects in De Soto impact us with the announcement of that plan and what else that could entail? How's that, how do we need to react to that?
Yeah.
To be prepared for that, because that's something they would not have known about in two thousand and three when they did this plan. So that, that would definitely be something I think we also need to consider.
Right in the middle of two major.
And the two major ones, you know, that are going to affect us.
It has to.
How do we respond?
And that junction.
The Aupa funds, the Aupa funds, where, you know, some of those will come to how a city responds to those things, and those funds are available. So if we don't know, if he doesn't know that there's potentially free state money available to respond in a certain way, and either provide daycare or either provide housing for university students and take pressure off from a community, which is one of the things that in the latest grant, that it's, it's money coming from the Department of Commerce. But if the information is not being sent around, people that live here don't know.
So which grant is coming from Commerce?
The Aupa, Aupa, American Recovery.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, that is a question now that I'm thinking about, which is how much of what would otherwise maybe be regular family housing is being used by students?
Yeah.
I mean, how much would it free up if you were able to provide other housing options? I'm curious about that.
And that there is, the, the latest round does provide some funding for exactly that, to say, okay, you know, we're gonna take a pressure off from the community by doing this. Let's say you decide to build, you know, and provide housing for fourteen students or fifteen students.
And that's, that I think is what Commissioner Crowley was talking about, is having more of a condensed, more dense area for housing, meaning possibly apartment complexes and things like that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
That are going to be providing to the community. But, you know, I don't know what Mr. Bean has done to, or even the city has done to draw in potential developers of that type of housing community, because that's what it is. It's a housing community within the community.
And they are, I think, right, Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall, they are. I think they're developers. I mean, I know as a university, we're constantly meeting with someone.
Right.
On a monthly basis, a different crew coming in with proposals and stuff like. On a monthly basis, a different crew coming in with proposals and stuff like that. Yeah, some sort of a pitch.
And there were some grants that were, that the city commission is discussing right now regarding housing too, if I recall.
The Modern Income Housing Grant, yeah. In fact, the deadline's tomorrow.
Yeah, that in can't, that deadline is like there.
We're actually working with staff on a couple of projects, multifamily projects right now, and in one of, and it's the way it is laid out right now with the multifamily, it's almost impossible to do what we're proposing to do. And we've, we've had these conversations with Mike that, and this is one of the things we've talked about, it, it, that needs change, is we need more multifamilies owning, because I don't, I don't know if you guys understand how this, how that works, but for multifamily, if you want to put, say, four, a four-unit house in a normal lot in town, it takes like five times the ground that it takes in multifamily residential. And so, just for instance, a fifty-foot lot, if you, if you want to build multifamily, it's gonna take four of those fifty-foot lots. And therefore, you're wasting all of that ground just to be able to build a multifamily unit there. If it was zoned a little bit differently,
Definitely.
it, it wouldn't require all that.
Mike, we have density standards, for example, that might be too restrictive.
And there, it seems like every time there is a proposal for any sort of multifamily housing, there is some, community members express a lot of concern, even if it's just a duplex going in. That's, that's because it seems like as if it's just spotting it in the neighborhood, whereas if we actually had a zoned area that was for multifamily, it would, there wouldn't be a question of even for the, I mean, there would be open to the community as the zoning changed for that land. But if the, once the zoning changed, then it would allow for the building of multifamily. Um, I think that it's one of those things that as the planning planner looks at the city and where the single-family is located and where best a multifamily zoning would be, um, I, I think that it comes from, from within your, your office yourself. And then we open that up as a different zoning, which allows for the multifamily to come in without question.
So, if, if you, if I may, you know, be, give it, uh, in the interest of time, I think, I think you have your answer, which is, yeah, there's need for a review, right?
Yep.
I mean, just given just what I've heard from Member Crowley alone, yeah, that's enough to say this needs to be reviewed.
Do you need us to motion or do anything to address this?
No, no motion.
No.
Okay.
No, not asking for a motion today.
But, but, you know, that, 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 there's a need for a review, you know, because the needs of today, you know, and this thing's so dynamic with everything that's changing, there was, you know, nobody ever, probably ever thought about it in two thousand and two thousand and three. But here we are, you know, in twenty-twenty-two, and we're faced with some realities that kind of need to be fixed. So, yeah, definitely, I'd say, uh, how and the mechanisms and the specifics, we probably can't answer right now in this meeting, but we can answer this question, yeah, we need a review.
Yeah, so if you look at this land use map, future land use map, that yellow is residential. You know, I, I didn't even look to see how residential's defined. But a lot of times on a, well, it's, it's, it's actually distinct from multifamily. But there are some areas on that map that are yellow, meaning residential, not multifamily residential, that maybe should not be yellow. Maybe it should be the multifamily, the red crosshatch.
And, and I'll also say that two of the projects that we are talking about are on, uh, in blocks that are undeveloped right now, that, that we can't even, that our arms, hands are kind of tied. But the other thing I think that needs to be changed is, I think we need to do something a little bit different with density requirements, because there are lots of four-unit, five-unit, six-unit complexes throughout, all throughout town that were done years ago before the density rule, where if, I think you, I think you ought to be able to take a fourplex and put it in some of these undeveloped spaces because they fit just fine. I mean, like I said, they're all through town, but where right now, the way it's written, you can't at all.
Yeah. Okay.
And there's, yeah, and there's nothing saying you have to have density standards in your zoning code either.
I think that ought to be looked at.
It, it's, it's typical, but a lot of times it's not, it doesn't make that much difference, you know, it's, it's math, but. So, it's, things that are ma- mathematical are appealing because they're object, you know, they tend to be objective, and you can easily get an answer, but anyway, that's kind of another story. So, I'll try to wrap this up here. I have a couple of slides about the zoning, and I don't have to go into this if you don't want me to.
In the interest of time?
Yeah, we can talk about it later. But there's the zoning map. I did put it into three different slides because of the shape of Ottawa, but, um, and it's still hard to read. But the light blue is low-density residential, the darker blue is, uh, median-density residential. And then find multifamily. There's not a lot of it. There's some there, some there. That's Prairie of the US States right there. That's a zone multifamily, but it's used as a soccer field, some by the city, so it's really park land. That's our two, I believe, so.
So, we're kicking ourselves in the foot, right? We, we all know we've got this problem with housing, but yet our zoning doesn't allow us to solve the issue.
Correct.
And our plan, you know?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think it, it should start with the, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, because you want your zoning consistent with the map.
Yeah.
With the, the plan. And, and that also is a vehicle for getting the community to all be in that conversation and to all recognize, yeah, we need multifamily, so they're a little bit more accepting of it. I don't think there's this huge adversity or adverse reaction to multifamily. I think, you know, it always happens on project-by-project basis. I think that's unavoidable. But that's one reason for having a visioning exercise and the updating the comprehensive plans, to kind of have that conversation.
I wonder how much of the zoning was influenced by the fact that the cost of housing was so much more reasonable in twenty oh-three, more people could afford a, a, a house, uh, whereas multifamily housing might be more suitable now, just because of budget.
Or negative, or attitude and sentiment towards multifamily housing, and you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, right.
You know, back then, you know, we, but now we wake up to a reality that we actually need it and, and is an integral part of us solving our housing problem for us.
I think it used to be that most households, most, I say most, I'm not sure what that percentage is, but most, when they got to a certain age, they bought a single-family home with a yard and they were married and
The picket fence.
Two or three children and and if you look at ownership patterns in cities, it used to be, say, seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the homes were owner-occupied. That's probably a lot, gotten much less over time. Household formation's a lot different than it used to be. I think there are a lot of people that people don't even get married or they don't have children, so the need, the housing needs are a lot different than they used to be. And I think people are more accepting of it than they used to be. I think it used to be, this is kind of a crude exaggeration, maybe a little bit, but if apartments were going in next to someone's house, they just assumed that all those, you know, people don't have any money, they're not responsible.
And or it's gonna turn into section eight or whatever, you know?
Transient, it's like, no, they're just, a lot of people, even if they can afford to own, they choose to rent, because there are a lot of advantages to it.
Another big thing is the, the people that are in charge of it at Ottawa University now are a lot more aggressive in getting more students here.
Yeah. Yeah, they are, yeah.
There's a lot more need for housing.
The need is there, and I think that aggressiveness, that aggression will, will, will persist for a while. So, in the interest of time, I think, I think, I think our discussion just proves a point. Right? Which is, I think a, a review is warranted, so please pass that message on to others and all the way to the city leaders, that the planning, the planning commission would like us to look at our comprehensive plan. For the sake of moving on, I do need to move on, uh, with our agenda and, uh, announcements, the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be Wednesday, October twelfth at seven PM, and, uh, a regularly scheduled planning commission study will be Thursday, October twenty-seventh at noon. Um, I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do have a question, though. Um, I, I apologize. It's in the old business from our last meeting. And, um, Dr. Hall, you were going to check into the bylaws and the code about attendance. Did you find anything about that? Or, or, because you, it was, um, Director Hall stated that there are written bylaws, not code. The bylaws could be changed. He'll look into it further. I just didn't want it to be something that kind of got, the can got kicked down the road again.
Thought I'd brought that back to a meeting, but maybe not.
I think, I think we had that meeting, and it was during that meeting, right, that there was a question asked about maybe redoing some of the wording, and, um.
It's in the old business section of our previous meeting, from the August meeting.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be addressed today. I just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle of, because it's been a little while since we met.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I saw that as we were going through, it was like, oh, yeah, I was gonna ask that question.
Okay.
Sure.
So, do you have that with you?
You have it right here in your notes from today. So.
Oh, that's in the meeting minutes?
Uh-huh, it's in your meeting minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's on page five.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
I will, I will look at that.
Noted.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. So, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Ours in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Ours opposed, same sign.